Well, good morning, everybody, and welcome to what is the 15th and final hearing of Portfellow Committee Number Two's Inquiry into Health Outcomes and Access to Health and Hospital Services in Rural, Regional and Remote New South Wales. The inquiry is examining health outcomes, access to services, patient experience, planning and capital expenditure in rural, regional and remote New South Wales. Before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people, who are the traditional custodians of the land on which the parliament sits, and I'd like to pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging of the Eora nation, and extend that respect to other Aboriginals viewing this broadcast over the course of the morning. Before I commence today, I'd like to make some observations, being the final hearing of this inquiry. This inquiry commenced in August 2020, has received over 700 submissions, and over the course of 11 months, has conducted 15 hearings, visited seven locations around the state and heard from 220 individual witnesses. The nature of this inquiry is such that the committee determined at the very start that it was critically important and necessary that we visit regional, rural and remote locations to hear from people on the ground. This was never to be an inquiry which would be conducted out of Macquarie Street in Sydney. Now, the pandemic unfortunately prevented some of those plans towards the very end being able to be met in terms of visiting certain locations. Nevertheless, with respect to the use of technology that's available to us, we've been able to broadcast some of our regional hearings using that technology to ensure the work of the committee could continue and be brought to its conclusion. I take this opportunity to thank the many, many people and organisations, obviously far too many to name, from right across the state who have been involved in this inquiry through both making submissions and coming along and participating at our hearings, either in person or remotely. Your efforts to do so have been greatly appreciated by the committee specifically and the parliament more generally because your participation is informing the parliament of New South Wales, the legislature in this state. Without your involvement, we would not be able to have collected the rich and detailed evidence that we will be using to prepare our report and its recommendations. I appreciate that involvement in the inquiry has been not easy for many of the participants. In fact, it has been excruciatingly difficult, often taking them back to difficult, sometimes tragic experiences or incidents involving family members and friends. For the individuals providing their evidence, this has been raw and deeply emotional. In particular, can I thank Jamel Wells and Liz Hayes, who have, arising from their personal experiences, most difficult personal experiences, worked and advocated so hard to bring to light so many issues that we have examined over the course of the inquiry. From the Tweed to the Murray and out to the South Australian border, we thank you ladies very much for your work and advocacy on behalf of so many citizens of this state. Can I also take this opportunity to thank all the committee members who've worked so cooperatively and collegially in this inquiry over many, many months? I'll say more of that at the end of the day when we're together privately, but I'd just like to formally acknowledge the cooperation and diligent work of everyone right across what's been a very long inquiry. And it would be completely remiss of me not to acknowledge the wonderful and outstanding organisational support work provided to this inquiry by the Legislative Council's committee secretariat, and once again, without acknowledging individuals, because there are many, I'd like to thank them most sincerely for their work, of which, if it had not been done in such a professional way, would not have produced the inquiry to the standard that we've been able to achieve. And of course, in acknowledging that, secretarial staff, I must also thank Hansard, who have done such a marvellous job in the collecting of the evidence through the testimony at our hearings right across the state. Thank you very much. Moving on then to today's hearing specifically, it has been conducted virtually, and I'd like to ask everyone for their patience through what may be any technical difficulties that we may experience. We hope that there won't be any. If participants, for whatever reason, lose their internet connection and are disconnected from the virtual hearing, I'm asking that they rejoin the hearing by using the same link as provided by the committee secretariat. Today, we'll be hearing from senior representatives from New South Wales Health. I thank you both for making the time available to provide evidence today. Appreciate that you both are very busy in your senior roles. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the evidence at the virtual hearing, the evidence provided at the virtual hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence today. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry in terms of reverence and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness in accordance with the procedural fairness resolution by the Legislative Council in 2018. There may be some questions that a witness could only answer if they had more time or with certain documents to hand. In these circumstances, witnesses are advised that they can take a question on notice and provide an answer within 21 days, sorry. Finally, just a few notes about virtual hearing etiquette. Can I just ask committee members once again to clearly identify yourself when you're asking the question and who you're directing it to? Could everyone please mute their microphones when they're not speaking? Please remember to turn your microphones back on when you're getting ready to speak. If you start speaking whilst muted, please start your question or answer again so it can be recorded into the transcript. Members and witnesses should avoid speaking over each other so we can all be heard clearly, particularly for the purposes of Hansard. Excuse me. And further to that, to assist Hansard, may I remind members here in the room and also participating remotely, which is the case for some today, and our witnesses, to speak directly into the microphones and avoid making comments when your head is turned away from the microphone. So, with those introductory words, I welcome our witnesses from New South Wales Health, witnesses who've been before the inquiry and in fact many other hearings before. Now, I note, of course, you would be aware of this gentleman, that Dr. Gassels have appeared under what are previous oaths or affirmations that you have sworn. So accordingly, we don't need to have you either sworn or affirmed for a second time. They stand. So with that said, can I invite an opening statement? And Dr. Lyons, will that be coming from you?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lyons.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today, Gamaraeau land, people of the Eora nation, and pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. Thank you for the opportunity to appear at this final hearing to discuss the issues raised over the course of the inquiry. We personally have listened to the experiences from community members, health professionals and health partners who have given their time to inform the committee. We acknowledge there has been evidence to the inquiry of regrettable patient experiences and outcomes. To these people and their families, we sincerely apologise for experiences that did not meet the high standards of healthcare expect that we expect in this state. On behalf of New South Wales Health, we reiterate our commitment to continual improvement and to ensure that all patients in the future receive the high quality care expected and deserved. The issues arising from the inquiry have been complex. In response, Health is committed to further exploring rural strategies and initiatives from domestic and overseas jurisdictions that have been effective in supporting the delivery of a sustainable rural health workforce that supports the delivery of primary and secondary care. Health will draw the experiences outlined through the inquiry and the research that we've commissioned to focus our efforts on four key future strategies for rural healthcare, including, and I'll now enumerate them. The first one is processes to reduce the divisions of responsibility for primary care across the federal and state boundaries. Currently, the constitutional boundaries between federal and state government responsibilities for health and the current distance of public and private sectors in delivering healthcare hinder the development of an integrated approach. Overcoming this barrier will be critical for success. This requires us to better clarify the roles of the Australian government and the New South Wales government in relation to primary care and ensure that funding is aligned with these responsibilities. We must move faster towards a national collaborative approach to delivery of primary care that rebalances responsibilities and funding for primary care and develop plans for integrated rural health services. The second effort is identifying an inclusive and integrated primary care model. New South Wales Health reaffirms its goal to ensure that all rural and remote residents of New South Wales have access to safe, high quality healthcare comparable to that available for city residents. We must design future rural health services that better in primary care with the high levels of care so that communities experience a seamless local healthcare service no matter where they live. Thirdly, we need to better engage communities in local health service development. Central to our efforts will be neighbouring local healthcare providers to apply co-designed principles, engage innovative communities in the creative design and development of new rural health services and changes to those health services over time. And fourthly, and most importantly, strengthening the rural health workforce, aligning training and education with health needs. We must strengthen and align investments in health workforce development to mitigate the identified gaps in service delivery and skill shortages. We must more vigorously advocate for Australian government investment in the vocational education and training sector to provide specific rural training opportunities for enrolled nurses and allied health assistants. Enhanced multidisciplinary primary care is a key focus to expand the roles of health professionals whose potential contribution may be under recognised, including nurses, nurse practitioners and paramedics, as well as promoting rural development for allied health professionals and doctors delivering primary and secondary care in cities. New South Wales Health is quite quick considering these drivers and underpinning opportunities in line with existing initiatives and other areas for further development. It is increasingly evident that integrated approaches bringing together primary and secondary care and leveraging utilising health professionals from different disciplines are likely to provide optimal care for rural and remote communities, making the most efficient use of healthcare expertise and provide support and job satisfaction for healthcare professionals. Systematic change is needed to build and sustain a workforce capable of delivering reliable, safe, high quality care to rural and remote communities. Finally, we want to acknowledge and thank our staff in healthcare facilities right across regional, rural and remote New South Wales for their dedication and tireless work. Our people are committed, dedicated and continually identifying that they will be able to provide consistent, safe and high quality care to meet the growing needs of their communities, and their efforts every day are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lyons. So, gentlemen, what we would like to do is proceed with our usual format of questioning. You're aware there are three groups represented at the table here or remotely. Today, we have representatives from the opposition, the cross mentioned, the government, and what we'd like to proceed to do is have 15-minute rolling tranches and work our way through to the end of the session. Are you okay with that? And if there's any issue as we proceed, as we go through, just let us know. But I think it should run quite smoothly. It's worked very well thus far, so I see no reason it can't work well with the recording. So with that said, we'll get underway, thank you, and we'll commence with the opposition. The Honourable Watts, accord.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lyons. Thank you, Mr. Minns. Now, with the indulgence of the committee, I'd just like to say a few words very briefly. I've been involved in the committee process for more than 10 years, and I have to say that the evidence that we received this committee has been heart wrenching, from families, patients, hardworking staff, doctors, nurses, allied health workers in the health and hospital system, and we've received evidence of hospitals without doctors, emergency departments and hospitals without doctors on the weekend.
Chair, apologies.
No, no, this is giving context.
I understand.
I'm giving context. I'm going to give some examples and then ask them something. May I continue, Mr. Chair?
I've given quite a lot of indulgence, Chair, but this seriously should be a question and answer, not a chance for a speech.
Okay. Well, so are you taking a point of order? Because that's what, is that a point of order?
Well, I just wanted some guidance to members to...
I was going to ask, sorry.
No, no, look, I'll provide some more indulgence.
Mr. Fang's point, I was going to provide about four or five examples and then ask them for a comment on that. Based on the evidence that we received, that is why they are here today, the last witnesses we are receiving.
I think there's reasonable context. Can I give a question? And I think the Honourable member's moving that direction.
I just wanted to make the point that it's not an opportunity for a speech.
I understand, Mr. Fang. So we've received evidence of hospitals without doctors. We've received evidence of nurses purchasing their own medical equipment to support patients. We've heard evidence of canteen and support staff looking after patients, doctors working on godly hours because they want to serve their communities, paramedics helping to deliver babies due to staff shortages, patients being discharged in the middle of the night from emergency departments in rural areas with no public transport. We've heard evidence that rural and regional families are receiving second class health system, a system that their city counterparts would never tolerate. Finally, I'd like to thank the families that have come forward to share their heartbreaking stories. I know that it was very painful to relive the last moments of their family's lives. I know it was painful, and I hope the Parrotay government starts to listen to the community and improves rural and regional healthcare.
Chair, I'd say we are definitely falling into the traps of a speech now.
Finally, I wish to thank Ms. Janelle Wells and Ms. Liz Hayes. I know that your late fathers would be proud of you both for your bravery, for your forthrightness and your love for them. Now, Mr. Minns and Dr. Lyons, in your opening statement, you talked about, quote, "a regrettable patient experience". With all the evidence that this committee has heard, how could you make such an underwhelming statement? What steps are you recommending to the government to bring rural and regional health up to the standard that we receive in Sydney? Dr. Lyons.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Court. We'd like you to first hand heard the evidence and have been, you know, it's been very difficult to listen to some of the evidence of the experiences of people who've had loved ones who've passed away and with the issues around access and care. We certainly acknowledge that the care that our staff endeavour to provide is often very challenging to deliver it to the standards that we would all expect, and that's because of the issues that we've all heard about, which are extremely complex, and that's why I was endeavouring to express our regret about those experiences. We certainly don't want those outcomes for anybody who attends any of our services. And we appreciate the acknowledgement, the impact that has on individuals and their families. And, you know, we were certainly striving in everything we do to continue to support improving the care delivered and providing the surety to our rural communities that they can access the healthcare that they expect locally, and we need their financial care that they're connected into services that can provide those seamless. Now, out of the testimony, the evidence provided, enormous opportunities that we've heard directly around the things that we can do differently, and that's what we're here to discuss with you in days about how we can address those issues, and we appreciate what we acknowledge, the evidence. I'm sorry that you felt it was an underwhelming apology, but it was an acknowledgement and apology for the care that wasn't to the level that was expected, and we sincerely offer that and remain committed to improving that care to ensure that others don't experience that in the future. Now, the challenges we face, you got that underlined in some of the comments you made at the start of that question. First and foremost is that we have a challenging workforce in rural communities being vulnerable to deliver that care. And some of the work that we commissioned to support the work of the committee and our efforts in the papers that were provided to the committee highlight that these issues are not unique to New South Wales, they're not unique to Australia. These are issues that health systems around the world are struggling with because there are a range of forces and factors over the last 20 years that have all driven healthcare in directions that make delivering healthcare to small rural communities that are dispersed geographically very challenging. And those things are, we have had changes in the regulation of health, we've had changes in the expectations of a trained healthcare professionals, we've developed a deep knowledge in healthcare, which means that the days of a healthcare professional providing very broad health services, from cradle to grave, at a level which could provide extensive support to rural communities are very difficult to deliver now because there are requirements to have specialist knowledge around things in delivering babies, in caring for children and young people, in even things like looking after end of life care. There is such a deep knowledge now around all of those things that to have an expectation that a GP, in some communities, they might be having one or two GPs, and as you've outlined, in some communities, not at all. Having a healthcare professional who can actually do all of those things and be available 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, it's not possible to do. So we need to find solutions that enable that to occur at a level of healthcare that everyone expects to be delivered now. The quality and safety, the level of training offered, the support systems and diagnostics to enable that to be done, all of those factors are driving these changes which are now being experienced by people who live in rural communities and who are attempting to deliver the care, and you've heard directly from many of them about how hard it is to do that.
Dr. Lyons.
We are very committed to working with you to make recommendations that support how we address those challenges, and we're very keen to explore with you what sort of further things might assist in that regard.
Okay, Dr. Lyons, on practical measures, evidence that was before the committee here, I would like to take you to Tamworth Rural Referral Hospital. We had evidence that eight operating theatres, that there are eight operating theatres in the hospital, but three of them are mothballed, not being used. Now, it's been almost two years since this committee was set up. Are the three operating theatres at Tamworth Hospital still non-operational?
So, Mr. Court, I mean, this is important, I think, for us to start to put some context around because just because a facility is built with a certain number of operating theatres or rooms for treatment or doesn't mean that they all need to be able to be operational at all times. And we build our facilities with a lifetime of 20 to 30 years into the future. So Tamworth Rural Referral Hospital, as an example, is a facility that was built just recently to meet the needs of the communities, not just now, but for 20 to 30 years into the future. It was built with the capacity to ensure that if and when the population grows and the needs are there, and those are planned and full out, you know, with projections into the future around population projections, demographic changes and healthcare needs, that those services are able to be expanded to meet those needs through the capital injection, the capital investment, the built infrastructure.
So the answer is, so, Dr....
Chair, I'm going to have to raise a point of order.
Dr. Lyons, I'm going to dispute what you said about the need, if you have three operating theatres at Tamworth Hospital that are mothballed. I just checked on the Bureau of Health Information data, and the average wait for elective surgery in Tamworth for non-urgent elective surgery is 210 days. Now, given that, how can you stand by the statement that the three operating theatres that are mothballed are not needed? You're saying that in fact they'll be open when there's demand?
Firstly, I say that mothballing is a term which has got a connotation which I don't support, and that's your word. So can I say this, though, that the waiting times for surgery in this state have increased recently because we've been through a pandemic over the last two years, where we've had from time to time a need to suspend some of those elective services to enable us to respond to the critical care needs of the community? So the waiting times have increased, yes. In terms of the response to, you know, why aren't the operating theatres active, it's because you need to ensure that the staff who are going to provide services to the community, including our RNE citizens and surgeons, are able to perform those surgeries in a way that is safe for the community. And if at the moment we've got a pressure in the system to respond to Omicron and having patients that have been COVID, and having staff reappointed to different services or fellow, it's not possible, even if the physical facilities are there, if the staff aren't able to safely deliver those facilities. And that's the circumstance.
Now, Dr. Lyons, just mindful of time, I want to take you to another example of evidence we've received. Double Base Hospital has apologised to the family of the late Alan Wells after he went without food and water for three days because the family were told that the hospital, quote, "could not..." "could not afford to roster someone on the long weekend to give him a SIP test." If a patient presented today at Dubbo this weekend, would they be able to receive a SIP test at that hospital? Now, that was one of the most startling pieces of evidence we received. Would they be able to receive a SIP test this weekend at Double Base Hospital?
Thanks, Mr. Seco. So I am not the chief executive of Western New South Wales, the district, so that is the organisation directly responsible for Dubbo Hospital, and a question that would be able to be more directly answered by that chief executive. But a SIP test is something which is a basic requirement for the care of stroke patients. And our expectation is that for stroke patient care, wherever that's provided, and whatever services in the state, those services need to be available for safer care. So that is our expectation.
Dr. Lyons, the reason I put these specific examples to you is because I saw you sitting in the front row of all of the rural and regional inquiries, the hearings that we'd held in rural and regional areas. And I'm putting specific examples to you because you were present when this evidence was presented. So that's why I'm giving individual answers. So can you guarantee that all hospitals in New South Wales can provide basic medical supplies such as Panadol since the beginning of this inquiry? That was evidence we received, that there are hospitals that didn't even have basic Panadol.
Thanks, Mr. Seco. We investigated those claims that were made and the evidence that was given and found no evidence that there were basic supplies like Panadol not available on any of our hospitals. So it is not something we were able to get to the bottom of, that there were examples where that had occurred. We failed to follow up following the evidence that was provided. So both basic supplies are available in all our hospitals. They're the sorts of things that are basic requirements for healthcare provision. And there are very strong and solid processes and systems in place to ensure that those resources are available for the delivery of healthcare in our hospitals. So it was somewhat of a surprise, Dr. Lyons, and our investigations did not ascertain that there was ever a situation where basic things like Panadol were not available.
Moving to our deputy chair, Honourable Emma Hurst.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both for coming today. A strong theme throughout this inquiry has really been about the lack of GPs in rural and regional areas. I know this issue has been flagged in your latest submission as being a problem, but the submission doesn't actually go into any sort of detail about how you're going to be working with the Commonwealth to actually address this problem. I just wanted to try and get some details, what are the specific steps that is going to be taken, say, in the next six to 12 months to actually change the current situation?
So, Deputy Chair, we made the point in our submissions at the very first, that there are many current trends associated with GP presentation or recruitment into rural areas that are heading the wrong way. So, you know, we've seen a consistent decline in people seeking to register within the Australian General Practice Training Programme since 2015. We had a slight rebound up in 2021, which we anticipate would be related to the reduced opportunities for graduate doctors to pursue different career options, particularly opportunities internationally. So it's a significant and enduring problem, and it's one that we have to work with the Commonwealth on. But we ourselves do a number of programmes to try and encourage people to GP placements in rural areas. And some of our most significant innovative trials are in that space, the best example being the single employer model in Maribor Local Health District. Where we're seeking, with the help of the Commonwealth with an exemption needed under the Health Insurance Act, we, or the hospital in question, is the main employer of the GP trainee, but the trainee is permitted to rotate through different general practices in the surrounding towns, such that they can complete their GP training. We have to look at taking these trials to great scale, and to do that, we need the collaboration of the Commonwealth Government.
And I think you mentioned in your latest submission that you were going to be working with the Commonwealth going forward. Are there any interim plans to try and boost GP numbers in rural areas while that work with the Commonwealth is going?
I don't really think it's something that we could do ourselves as a jurisdiction. We have scholarships to encourage people to enter GP practice, and we have targeted programmes that are about encouraging people to enter those programmes from rural settings. So they're already in place. What we need to do that addresses the underlying decline in the willingness of medical graduates to enter a career in general practice are matters that we can't act on alone. We have to work with the Commonwealth.
And do you have any indication from the Commonwealth at this point whether they are going to support the expansion of those trials that you've been running?
Well, the current framework has a long evaluation period for the trials. I think one of the points we've been making at officer level is that perhaps we need to look at more speedy evaluation so that we can see if we can bring the programmes to wider use and more scaled use quicker.
We heard a lot of evidence in this inquiry that local councils were actually having to run fundraisers just to be able to raise money to actually attract GPs into the area. And they would fundraise to get the costs of relocation costs for GPs to move into their area. Is New South Wales Health planning to or would consider working with councils who say they need GPs to provide relocation or other costs as needed so that they don't have to continue that fundraising?
So the local health districts already were hand in glove with local government when they're trying to fill those particular gaps in certain communities. And the local health district itself has some discretion associated with support for attracting people to employment if they were to, if they were to accept a GP VMO appointment at a facility in that district. So the paper that we made about it to the committee by the Sacks Institute, I think, really does describe in some pretty compelling detail why there is this generational drift away from both general practice itself and general practice in a rural, a particularly remote context.
Sorry, Mr. Minz, just because I don't have much time, I'm just wondering why local councils felt that they needed to fundraise? If you're now saying that you are working with councils to provide some of that funding, why are some councils feeling that they still need to fundraise?
Well, I think you need to understand that the decision of a medical practitioner to go and be a GP in a regional town is a matter that relates to the viability of fat general practice. And that's a matter that's bound up with the Medicare rebate system. So the local council is trying to make the economic and community conditions associated with the GP practising in their town as favorable as possible to attract people. And in the first instance, if that GP doesn't intend to be a visiting medical officer at one of our facilities, then we really have no role in that process whatsoever. But if we're in lockstep with the council and, you know, other entities in government to try and encourage GPs to a town, and often we, you know, a key player in this is the Rural Doctors Network, which is, you know, the chief agency that's trying to support these kind of GP practices forming and being sustained. We all work together, but in essence, you know, the New South Wales Health System is not the jurisdictional governor of general practice in Australia. It's just not what we do. And so if it's not considered viable by doctors to sustain a GP practice in an area, then we all try to do what we can to change those settings, but we're not the main player in that.
Thank you. I think that's my time.
Just about, probably another minute, if you got, no, quite right. Thank you. Kate Emin. We'll come back. Sorry, Emma, Emma, sorry, it actually rang when I just said what I'd said. I apologise. So circle back, Kate, Kate Emin.
Thanks, thanks, Chair. I just wanted to begin just with a, with a general question about what is being done to, there's a bit of feedback on the line, can you hear me okay?
No, you can hear, yeah, that's better.
Right. Thank you. So since COVID, since COVID began, what new measures has New South Wales put in place to retain existing nurses working in regional hospitals, and particularly registered nurses with decades of experience? What new measures have New South Wales Health put in place?
So all of our districts would be practising what they would call their employee assistance programmes, their support to staff programmes. In addition to those, there's been a few things done centrally. So through the Health and Education Training Institute, we've developed websites with tools and resources that provide people with advice about self-care during the pandemic. We've done a lot of upskilling and training of our rural and regional workforce associated with PPE, specialist training to allow people to either return to or cycle through an ICU. We've done work around embedding psychological safety in the daily routines of our, of our facilities. And there's been specific initiatives as well associated with support lines, for example, for junior doctors. All of our districts and all of our facilities, and certainly when you visit them, you, it's clear that the wellbeing of staff is on the mind of the workforce in the facility all the time. I think what you have to acknowledge, and we acknowledge, is that the Delta outbreak and then the Omicron outbreak have, you know, they've been significant and challenging developments in all of our workplace settings. And we, at the end of, or towards the third quarter of 2020, our central workforce teams worked with every district around their sort of emergency search plans. And, you know, there were 30 initiatives within, within the framework that were designed to say, how do we get additional resourcing? How do we support? How do we use more students? What are our options for relieving registered nurses of some tasks by getting other people to do other things? So all of those 30 strategies, you know, were in place and were set. But you'd have to say, when Omicron hit and the speed with which it hit, and the speed with which it led to furloughed staff, it overwhelmed those strategies. And, you know, we acknowledge that, and our chiefs acknowledge that. At our peak, I think, on the 14th of Jan, January, we had about 6,300 staff unavailable. And now, not all of those are medical and workforce, and I can give you the breakdown if you'd like it. But that, you know, that happened so quickly that, and it also happened in a period where, as of the middle of November, our districts have been working really hard to encourage people to take a break over what is traditionally the quieter period of Christmas and early New Year. So we were in a system that had recovered from Delta, and we were saying, right, staff, take a break, it's, it's time to, you know, to get some energy back. And then we were hit in a very fast and short period with an escalation of Omicron. And that's 6,300 staff unavailable to us. A large proportion of it were not in furlough because they were in close contact, they were in furlough because they had COVID. And about 90%, and I think at peak, 95% of those COVID cases in our workforce were community derived, not workplace derived. So once it became overwhelming in the community, it had a very, very significant effect on our workforce. And most of our search strategies were exhausted, they'd been tapped out, they didn't have any more capacity.
Thank you. One of the, one of the things that we, we have heard throughout the inquiry, and of course increasingly as a result of Omicron, is, and you've just said it yourself, is the exhaustion of frontline healthcare workers. There's increasingly, and an increasing number of very experienced nurses who have been working in the profession for a couple of decades, three decades, sometimes more, who weren't necessarily close to retirement before COVID, and some are walking away and are threatening to walk away. And in fact, in Lismore based hospital, sorry, Lismore based hospital, over the Christmas period, 18 staff left, many of them nurses, that left to go, in fact, over the border, where there's better conditions, better pay, and what have you, many of them to work over the border. So what has New South Wales Health, within this time, talked about the need to offer incentives to nurses, to do something to retain them? And I note in your, you've got the supplementary submission to the inquiry where the Sacks report looked at various ways to encourage retention of the workforce. I note that the financial incentives is dismissed a bit. I'd really like to know New South Wales' health thinking on this, and whether you have considered that as a way to really retain those more experienced nurses, because we're losing their skills, we're losing their experience right now.
So, Mr. Emin, there's a couple of things I can disclose and some that I can't. We started thinking about work towards the end of October that was designed to take a complete look at workforce status, supply issues, demand issues. Just to give you some, a couple of cases that illustrate why we had to really think about starting over again. A lot of our regional LHDs in border areas rely upon a supplier that comes over the border. And it's interesting, they sort of go, staff go both ways, from northern New South Wales to Queensland and vice versa. But when we lived through the periods of lockdowns and border restrictions, a lot of those people made decisions to say, well, I'm not going to continue doing that. So, so we just lost pockets of workforce that had long been borrowed to us, even when borders reopened. And that affected our border-based LHDs quite significantly and still is. So it's an example of something that's changed in our context. So we're doing work with partners to understand the totality of what we need to rethink about our workforce structure and our workforce capacity. And we're actually calling the project that is about workforce recovery, because we know that our staff, they were tired after Delta, they were more, they're more tired now. And although we are hopeful of a, of a pattern of the elders, you know, working to the models that have been in the public domain, we're quite there again. And we look ahead to the fact that we may face, you know, a challenging winter. So we definitely want to put in place recovery strategies for our workforce. We are doing that thinking right at this time in the ministry. I'm afraid as a public servant, I can't comment on the advice that we are giving or have given to government.
Thank you. Return Kate again, not too far away, but we'll move to the honourable Wartson.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to Mr. Minz and Dr. Lyons for appearing today. And I'm just going to take this opportunity and the indulgence of the committee to actually acknowledge, as the Honourable Wartson said, or did, the attendance through the majority of the hearings by the two gentlemen that are appearing today. And I think that is an example of how, even through a pandemic, New South Wales Health has taken, I guess, this issue very seriously and has been committed to looking at the issue. So I just wanted to make that, that point known, and thank you both for the effort that you've put into not only that you've put into not only attending the hearings but providing information to this committee. And I think that I'd join all members to have that acknowledged by us. On that, we've discussed a few times today the provision of doctors in regional rural areas. And we know that, as other members have asked questions around it, there is difficulties with attracting and retaining, for example, GPs in smaller centres. I just wanted to ask, given there's potentially trainees, GP trainees who will go to rural regional areas to train, or perhaps a newly graduated GP who may be looking to go to a rural, rural regional area. In your opinion, what incentives are most attractive and actually work in being able to draw those trainees or new GPs to an area? Can you provide some insights as to what you think or what you've acknowledged will, will work?
The report that we provided to you from SASS Institute, it does make the point that it's a multi-discipline sort of strategy to try and address this issue of attraction to regional and remote areas. And it's, it's not dissimilar to some of the issues that are faced by the Australian Defence Corps when it, when it relocates its, its members throughout different parts of Australia. You are seeking to recruit doctors, but you really have to bring their, their family if they have one with them. And you have to try and retain their family over time. And that's the case for doctors, it's the case for nurses and to allied health professionals. So, it comes down to things like how sustainable is the community they're joining in terms of the employment prospects for their family and their educational opportunities available for their children? And the housing stock that's potentially available? And I think you've probably noticed, as, as we have, it's one of those factors we'll consider in our recalibration of workforce strategy, that there's been a movement towards regional centres, but now it's creating a choke point around accommodation in those places. And it's pricing out some of the essential workforce that, that might already be there or might be thinking about going there. So, it's all those factors. And at the end of the day, if someone is seeking to engage in, in general practice, they need to have a depreciation that is a viable economic strategy for them. And so, that comes down to the size of the town, what they can expect to achieve in earnings through the Medicare system and how many other GPs might already be there. And so, they're, they're all factors that play into it. And we need to work with Commonwealth, we need to work with other New South Wales government agencies to try and influence things like the housing issue and the education issues.
I think the evidence that's in those papers also points to the benefit of actually ensuring that people who have grown up in rural communities are offered the opportunities to gain training of professions as much as possible in rural environments. And ensuring that those are equally good in a way that has a pathway for ongoing development of these kids, whether that's in nursing, allied health or medicine. I think we've got some rural benefits that we've gained, the rural clinical schools and having our rural preferential models where we can actually have doctors, young doctors, preferentially relocate or relocate to rural environments to gain their rural training. I think we've got a bill on that to ensure that for the later, more, more vocational training, people do whatever profession they're in, that they can do that and sit here in rural as well. And that's not always the case at the moment. And I think we need to do more than working with the specialty colleges, the College of Nursing as well, and ensure that there are arrangements for that skill to be gained and that experience to be gained in a way that can keep people in those rural environments rather than having to go to the city to gain that experience. The other issue, of course, is, is our model, it is, is another good example, that to train the GPs, you start off in the New South Wales health system and then you go out into general practice for training. Having a single model which allows continuity of employment means that people can have certainty about their employment arrangements right through until they've finished their training. I think these models are one that we want to expand, scale up and work with the Commonwealth and the training providers to ensure availability to more people.
Thank you for that, that was very comprehensive and interesting. What I, what I do wonder though is that a lot of these, I guess, structural changes that, that have, I guess, been already implemented and are perhaps being, looked at being implemented, how long is the pipeline for those changes? They're not, they're not an overnight, they're not going to overnight produce a raft of more doctors for rural, regional areas, they do take some time, is that correct?
Yes, I do, but on the positive side, although the prerequisites for any of those things are already in place. So, the opportunity for a, you know, a young rural person to train a gaily university degree in a health profession is available now. The opportunity to do that pre-vocation training in rural environments is there now. It's when we get into those specialty training, the vocational training areas, we've got to do more with getting agreement from the Commonwealth and from the colleges about how that could be done differently in rural environments. And I think the other big issue, of course, is we've got to overcome this structural issue around private practice and life, so we're not misdeemed to talk about general practice being mostly it's about private practice in town. Yet the relationship between the services we provide and the services that are provided by a GP in private practice is so intricately linked that we've got to come up with one which enables that to be done in a way that's more attractive to somebody. And if, if you're a GP going to general practice and you're paying on a fee for service model through MBS, you need to get an environment where there's enough population to generate fee for service activities to accommodate a provider. We've got, we've got to come up with some different policies, might even need to look at the way some of these things are financed to get agreement from the Commonwealth about new arrangements to accommodate GPs in a way that makes that more sustainable in the long term.
So, I guess, coming back to the question that I asked, that we, we are going to see soon, I guess, that those structural changes starting to make a difference to the number of doctors that we've got coming through. But what you're also saying is, is that, I think, for example, with Wellington, where we were for one of the hearings, there were a number of GPs in town, but there was, they weren't providing VMO services to the, the hospital. And what we need to do is ensure that we have that Commonwealth, state government linkage, because Medicare is obviously Commonwealth-based, and provision of services within hospitals, obviously from New South Wales Health, is finding a way to better work together with the Commonwealth. Is that a, a good summation of what you were effectively saying?
Absolutely, I think we would look to opportunities like recommendations from this committee that would actually assist in ensuring that we get a focus on the things that would make a difference. And so, that's what we're counting to provide some of those papers which you've received in that supplementary submission, to enable us to think about what we want to, to enable us to accelerate and to get agreement across the government around that, the changes that we put in place.
And I do thank you for that supplementary submission and the attachments, of which one has been published to the, the website for the committee. We were talking a little bit earlier about Tamworth Hospital, and, and I just wanted to, I guess, give you the opportunity to provide a little bit more context about that. Because, for example, if the state government builds a road and we build it with one lane each way and it serves a capacity now, we know that in 10, 15 years, the, the road will become traffic jammed because of the increase in traffic. Is it effectively the same with hospitals, that they're built, their lifespan is such that you plan for future and so the, the additional capacity is effectively there for future use? Is that a, is that a fair estimation of the?
That's exactly right. We've had a record level of capital investment in our programme for building of hospital infrastructure, healthcare infrastructure over the state in the last 10 years. And that is going to continue. You know, pleasingly, around two-thirds of the investment has been for facilities in rural and regional environments, which was wicked needed because that investment hadn't been there in the past. And I think our rural communities have benefited from that. But when we do plan those facilities, we look not just at the population now, but we look at the population projections for the next 20 years. And we look at the demographic changes and we also look at the healthcare liberalisation changes and think about what services might be required, not just now, but in 10, 15 years' time. And so, we build facilities that enable the flexibility to provide those future services. I mean, and we do that in a way, and you've heard the example, the operating theatre, the number of operating theatres that we're, we often build more operating theatres than are required by power, because we know that there will be increasing demand over time. And it's very destructive, in fact, unsafe, to try and operate theatres onto a hospital environment which is operating, is delivering care at the same time. So, to have those built up front is actually the best way to do it. But we recognise it's, it's almost a double-edged sword often when we do that, because as soon as we build something, even if we indicate that it's for 20 years' time, it's often decided to use those facilities immediately. And, and people often don't understand that it's done on the basis that we will leave that down the track. Doesn't mean that because we've built now, it needs to be commissioned and used straight away. But it's often, you know, as you, people think healthcare needs are infinite and people will look at opportunities to say, well, we should be doing more. And it's not just about the physical infrastructure, I have to say, it's about the workforce to safely deliver that care as well. And we've heard about the challenges of doing that, particularly in rural and regional areas, and it's, it's not just about the physical facilities, it's about having the workforce to provide that care as well. I think what we are looking at is what strategies need to be to be sure that we've got that workforce available 10, 15 years down the track of work.
So, so like a road that is perhaps at capacity from the first day that it's opened, and in 30 years it's in a traffic jam, could you perhaps provide some insight to what might have occurred in a, in a, say, a regional centre where hospitals built with the number of operating theatres at capacity from day one? And what would have, what issues that might have caused in 30 years where the, the ability for expansion wasn't built into the hospital?
Thanks, so, I mean, straight away, if you build a hospital that's fully utilised at the time it opens, then you've got difficulties down the track in spite of that increased demand of population change and demographic changes. And so, it's really important that we address that upfront. The consequences would be that there are limitations on the care that can be provided through that facility for the local community. It would be that difficulties accessing care or having to travel outside of that community to access that care. And for basic things often that would otherwise, you know, be provided in that town. So, I think, yeah, that little community, so I think it's really important that we don't compromise by doing just what we need right now. We do think about the future, because otherwise it means that, you know, that people won't be able to access the care they need when they need, or they'll need to be transferred out of the town to, to enable access to that care, and that's not desirable.
Thank you very much for that. I think the nature of politics would have been that there would have been criticism had we built a hospital that was at capacity from day one. So, it's just interesting to get those insights and, and put them on the record, because I think it's very important that we acknowledge that they are for expansion and it's not that they are mothballed as perhaps they might have been described earlier. I'm just going to see how much time I've got left Chair, oh, there we go.
There you go.
There, I'll pass back to the Chair.
Thank you, Honourable Worsing. We now return to the opposition and move through another set of 15-minute questions. Is that done well?
Thank you, thank you Mr Chair. Now, I want to take you back to evidence that was provided in Western New South Wales. I know that you gentlemen would be familiar with, with it. It was Golgong Hospital, Golgong, doctors in emergency departments, doctors in hospitals, the tragic case of Dawn Trivet, who died, I think, September 2020, the year 2020, where she bled, bled to death with no doctor present, but she was on telehealth. It was because there was no doctor in the hospital. Does Golgong Hospital have a doctor now and since the evidence was presented on the front page of the Sydney Morning Herald and to this committee?
So, we are still challenged across all rural towns about having 24/7 coverage of doctors in every hospital. I think one of the things that has been hard on through the evidence that's been provided in this committee is that the ability to do that is challenged by the workforce available, we've heard that evidence, what we're indicating is that we, we can't guarantee that every hospital will have a doc 24/7 in the rural environments, both for workforce complications.
Dr Lyons, I only have 15 minutes and I'm asking very specific questions, so the, I take it that Golgong Hospital still does not have a doctor available in the hospital?
Well, I don't know the specific answer, but I'll take that on note, but it's about the particular question around the local, I was giving a general reflection of the situation in rural hospitals.
Okay, so we still?
If I may, Chair, is there one further point I could make? I think we said in our opening statements 15 months ago that we, we were spending some, a number around $140-plus million on locums in rural and regional hospitals. So, it's, it's not as if when we struggled in the recruitment activity that, that we down tools and we don't show any interest in getting a doctor to a place like Golgong. A huge amount of effort is deployed to try and attract a locum to cover those missing shifts, and a, a large amount of expenditure is outlined in, in providing locum coverage. But even with that, there are occasions where locums can't be found before they, before they drop out at the last minute, and we know that we have that experience. And it's been made worse by border issues, because in a large number of instances, locums were coming in from interstate.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'd like to return to an earlier answer that you gave Dr Lyons, where I asked about nurses claiming that in New South Wales hospitals, the country hospitals, lack basic medical supplies, including Panadol. And I remember the evidence included also in continence pads. And you said that you were unable to confirm those reports. Did you in fact investigate those reports?
Yes, so subsequent to that, that evidence being provided, we requested the district investigate the assertions that had been made. And the, the advice that we've seen, they brought that category evidence of that situation that was outlined in the evidence had occurred.
Did they talk to the nurses?
That was the feedback that was provided, you know, the district would have spoken to people in those hospitals around the assertions that were made, and the feedback was that there was no ability to be a situation where that evidence could be confirmed.
Would you also confirm that patients in emergency departments in rural and regional hospitals are still getting teleconference consultations in the emergency departments from doctors based overseas in Europe? Is that still occurring in New South Wales?
So, the issue around where the doctors are from, I don't have the detail, but I do know that there are still, where we are in a situation, and it's, my colleague has outlined, every attempt is made to ensure that we have a healthcare professional physically in the facilities to provide services.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, and we did that, we did try to do that for every facility across the state. Where that's not possible, then what happens is that the staff that are outside go to their co-sets or their, their arrangements that mean that they then get support from other network arrangements in the local health district, and some of that may be telegraphed.
Yeah, I understand that some doctors.
The vast bulk of those all professionals are actually within the same local health district usually. So, in this situation about from overseas, I have no evidence that that occurs.
Well, we, we had, we had evidence to this committee from the company that provides the, the telemedicine, and in fact, representatives that have approached committee members in airports to talk about how wonderful their service is and how they have doctors in Europe, including countries like Switzerland, on teleconference with doctors in country New South Wales. Do you think that they have the? Do you think that they have the knowledge and understanding, a doctor in Switzerland providing advice to an emergency department in country New South Wales, Western New South Wales, would have the knowledge and understanding of the patient needs and situations?
Just to clarify, Mr. Spoh, having looked at evidence myself, my understanding is that those were, those are people coming to offer potential solutions to the situation that rural New South Wales is in. Not that they were actually providing those services now. And that would, that would indicate that the telehealth enables you to do things that we wouldn't have thought of, including having that support from people who are preparing or making that situation. That was, that was a private company offering a solution to the situation we find ourselves in delivering rural and regional healthcare.
Well, they inst...
As I understand it, a group that is providing services in New South Wales.
Well, they insist...
I'm happy to reflect on that, Chair, but my understanding is not it.
Now, okay, so you're taking that on notice? I'm very pleased with that. We also heard at the hearings that the 66 bed hospital in Leighton, its operating theater has been unused since 2016 because the recovery room is 11 centimeters too small. Has that been fixed since it was revealed to the committee?
So I would be very surprised that a operating theater could not be used because the recovery room is 11 centimeters too small. So the person who provided the evidence may, may believe that that's the reason why it's not being used. I suspect that the reason it's not being used is because there aren't people with the skills to enable the care that we provide in a way that enables surgery to be performed in our schools if this expensively. So we're happy to get further detail for you on that, but having a recovery room that's 11 centimeters too small would be, I think, very unusual for a reason not to provide care.
That was the evidence provided to this committee, but you're taking that on notice. In, I want to take you to Southern New South Wales. In 2019, the federal government announced that BGA, Euro Badella, as a targeted region to fund regional radiation treatment centers, about $45.5 million in competitive grants, which closed in October 2020. Now, Southern New South Wales Local Health District didn't apply for funding for cancer treatment in Euro Badella. Why? Why did they not apply for cancer treatment in rural and regional areas, particularly Southern New South Wales, where there is a desperate need for cancer treatment, and people have to travel up to two and a half hours for treatment?
I think it was a factor, a combination of factors, Mr. Spoh, that meant that they didn't apply for those. The first is that when you deliver cancer care, that you don't look at providing radiation oncology in isolation of all the other components of cancer care, including chemotherapy, surgical oncology, and the other components that mean you provide comprehensive cancer care, which is multidisciplinary, multiple, multiple specialists. So you've got to have all of those in the environment to provide comprehensive care. Having a linear accelerator available in, in a town by itself is not optimal. So that's the first factor. The second factor is that to, to utilize that equipment, it's not just that, as we've indicated with our range of things, having the equipment, you've got to have the people with the skills to walk around the equipment. So you've got to have the ability to attract and retain specialists, and for a linear accelerator, it's not just the doctors who provide the treatments, the radiographers who provide the use of the machines, it's the physicists who operate the machines. There are a range of specialist clinicians who need to be recruited and retained to enable that to occur. And I think the third factor is that when you look at the population and the need for cancer care, I think the numbers indicate that there would be about one patient per day from that geography that would require a radiation treatment. So if we were to pursue building a radio accelerator in that community, you would use it for one patient a day, and it's multiple millions of dollars of capital equipment. It's all those specialist teams that I talked about, it's the other services that need to be linked to it. And when you look at this, it's hard to justify that investment for one or two patients a day.
So you're standing by the local health district's decision not to apply for those grants?
I think in the circumstances they considered very carefully, the needs of the local community and their ability to deliver the services in a way which is comprehensive and high quality. And the decision they made was they weren't in a position to be applying for a grant without all of those other factors in place.
Good, thank you. Now, I know that you've been following the evidence of this committee. I've seen you at all the hearings, sitting in the front row. Are patients still being dumped on the street in Lismore Base Hospital in Northern New South Wales, especially emergency department patients, and no public transport there? Are patients still being dumped on the street?
That's a very unfortunate use of words, Mr. Spoh. I mean, transferred to higher levels of care from small communities, because there is a view that their clinical condition warrants that assessment by staff who've got training skills that are above what's available in the local town. There is no doubt that we are challenged that when we move a patient to a higher level of care, and they're subsequently discharged from that care because they're, they're well enough to be able to go home, how they get home is a challenge. And our staff do everything they can to try and ensure that the person is connected with an appropriate transport option to get them home, recognizing that in rural communities there are very limited options, and that often falls to family members or friends to provide that support. It is very difficult for our services to ensure that transport is available, but we do everything to ensure that people are supported in making the arrangements to get home, and that we think about the hours of the day, and this has, this has happened and been reinforced since the evidence of the inquiry. But if somebody is well enough to go home, that they're not requested to leave at 2 o'clock in the morning, that there are arrangements in place to ensure that if they can get support and transport home from a family or friend, that that's accommodated and aware that that was the person to be cared for until that transport arrives.
I want to take you to, so would you accept that patient transfer, discharging patients in rural and regional hospitals is a major challenge? Because we also had evidence of a patient, Cobar Dubbo Hospitals, where he had to have a toe amputated because there was no transport available to get to Dubbo. So what is the state government doing about patient transfer and getting people between rural and regional hospitals, from smaller hospitals to larger hospitals, where there is no public transport available? Now, you talked about Northern New South Wales. I want to know, has there been any programs or any assistance or any moves to remedy the problem between Cobar and Dubbo?
So just to put this in context, if someone presents to my services and needs to be transferred to a higher level of care, we absolutely take that as our responsibility and make the arrangements for that transfer, whether that's by ambulance or one patient transport service that our local services, our local districts, they help you operate. The challenge for us is in situations where somebody is going to an outpatient appointment or to a specialist consultation, often it may be a specialist in private practice in a rural town, and they have to travel from a distant town to get to that service. It is a challenge for us. As health, it's very difficult for us to be responsible for every aspect of transport services in rural communities. We're certainly, we evidently can in relation to supporting access through things like the isolated patient travel and the supportive accommodation subsidies, where if people are required to travel, then we provide a subsidy to support the costs of that transport if they have to, if they provide it privately.
Okay, thank you.
It's very difficult for us to provide transport for services in every town, for every service, at any point in time, when our focus is on providing healthcare in facilities that we operate.
Dr. Lyons, this will be my last question of the entire parliamentary inquiry. Now, you've heard almost two years of evidence. As a senior health official in New South Wales, with a person with the hands on the levers, were you surprised or shocked? Were you surprised by the evidence that turned up to this inquiry, to the personal stories, the first person stories? Were you surprised by the extent and deterioration of health in rural and regional New South Wales?
I think we were all shocked by some of the stories that we heard, Mr. Spoh. I think what highlights for me is that we have been working extremely hard to ensure that our rural communities continue to have access to the highest quality care. What we've done is continued to make efforts to improve that, to address the issues that have emerged. But what I was surprised about is the extent to which, despite all the efforts that we have made, all the improvements we've put in place, all the investments that have been made, all the additional infrastructure that's been invested in, and the staff that have been employed, there are still so many factors that are working against those things that we've put in place, that are still leading to the challenges that you've heard about, ensuring that people get the care they need when they need it. And I think what that highlights for all of us is that we need to work doubly hard to address those issues that have emerged. That's why we put the supplementary submission in, to highlight where we think we could make further inroads rapidly to address those issues, because none of us are to see the care that we've heard about being continued, and we want to improve the care that's provided to our citizens in rural and regional areas.
Thank you, Dr. Lyons. Deputy Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. An issue that's been raised by many different rural communities with access to local maternity care, and we've heard a lot of distressing stories of women being forced to give birth on the side of the road, trying to get to a hospital. What is New South Wales Health doing to try to address this statewide?
We've got many examples of difficult levels of care that have been put in place to try and ensure that we can provide maternity services safely and appropriately in rural settings. Midwifery levels of care that have been supported, looking at those, we've got training programs for our doctors to be rural generals, to get the skills in both maternity care, in anesthesia, because often if you're providing aesthetic services, you need the support not just of a person with skills in delivering a baby, but if there are any complications, there might be a cesarean section required, which requires an ESS to deliver an anesthetic. All of those things are being supported by programs investing in people gaining the skills to be able to do those things. Our challenge that highlights in some of the papers we've given, the received and supplementary submission, is that to maintain skills in those different subspecialty areas, there's now requirements to observe those procedures each year to ensure that those skills are maintained at the level to provide safe, high-quality care. And in many of our rural centers, there are not enough deliveries to keep people with the skills to enable them to be certified in ongoing ways and to continue to do that clinical care. So it's another example of the changes that have occurred over the last 20 years that have driven us to have less service provided in dispersed settings, but concentrated more into settings where there are large enough cases to be ensuring that the care can be provided safely, that people maintain their skills. But that means that they are often consolidated, and that means that services that used to be available locally aren't able to be maintained in the future. So this is one of the challenges, that one of the tensions that is continuing to drive the change that we need to support.
If I may, Deputy Chair, the, the nursing graduate pipeline that is operating in New South Wales is, is really a case of oversupply. We hire the graduates that we need, and we've been growing that every year, and we grew it by a significant amount this year to try and support the workforce as a result of the outbreak. But that's not the case for midwifery graduates. And so the circumstance with midwifery is we have two ways to bring them into our workforce. One is through a direct undergraduate program, and the other is through a mid-start program where an already qualified registered nurse takes part in a midwifery training program. And we offer scholarships to try and promote people into that pathway. But we would say that, you know, whilst we probably can recruit nurses on a, on a macro scale as we need them, not so the case with midwifery. And of course, with nurses, we know there's an issue about recruitment to certain regional locations.
Yeah, we've heard how, you know, having some continuity of care model with midwifery really reduces a lot of the, the issues. And obviously, this is a major problem in remote and regional New South Wales if we can't get, I mean, it sounds like there's a couple of problems in, in the, the fact that we don't have enough midwives, but you're pushing the training. But what, what do we need to do to actually get more midwives into these areas where people aren't able to get these hospitals in time?
So we've talked with some of the rural and regional LHDs about a range of innovative strategies that are designed to try and fast track the training of new graduate nurses. And so part of the issue is that, that getting a RM to go to one of the smaller MPS sites or, or a smaller regional facility, they, they might not have the confidence to go to such a place where they might be in charge on shift as a relatively new graduate. And so in Western New South Wales, they're looking at programs to try and bring new graduates in, take them to the major centers, expose them to a structured training program and supervised work practice, such that they can then have them going back out with confidence into the smaller facilities. And that kind of grow your own strategy within a district is what we need to see happen with the mid-start midwifery program as well.
What I've heard, just speaking with the groups in the area, is that statewide, only 10% of women can access a known midwife at birth. In New Zealand, apparently, that's 90% of women can access a known midwife. What, what do you think is happening in New South Wales, and why that's so different to New Zealand? What are they doing that, that we can learn from?
I think you need to look at the context of how services are delivered in different jurisdictions based on, around the different factors, and that looking at midwifery in isolation to how the services are provided is, is somewhat problematic. I mean, you've got to look at the overall model of care. I mean, we've had a model of care in, in Australia that's historically been through medical models with midwifery supporting them. Increasingly, we've got models now with midwifery providing holistic care in a continuous way, which I think is a very often thing. But historically, that's been different in New South Wales. And I'm, I'm not sure what the arrangements have been in New Zealand historically, but I suspect they've had a different model of service delivery for some time, if I can explain that.
Is there any discussion of expanding publicly funded home birthing programs to provide women with more options as to where to actually give birth? My understanding is that they are available in some LHDs, but not all LHDs.
The maternity services review, they look to provide holistic care with a range of options for women to make choices about how they would like to have their maternity care and their baby delivered. And where possible, they're offering arrangements like, you know, birth, where that's appropriate and safe to do so, and where the staff have the skills available to do that, and are available geographically to be available quite soon, and the mother is going to be delivering the baby. So you can see that we get away from the concentrated populations into more dispersed communities. It's more difficult to provide those types of long-term care, but we're very open to continue to support those being available, and having staff who are willing and capable to provide that care, that is supported to do so.
Something that it really just comes down to the fact that it's more likely to be available for larger LHDs, but for rural and remote, it comes back to the same issue that we keep talking about, is getting the qualified people in the area to be able to offer these services. Is that right?
That's correct, that's my mistake.
And, and the other point that I think was really interesting in the Saks Institute report, Deputy Chair, is that it, it makes the point that what is now available in major regional hospital settings is almost on par with metropolitan. So we've, we've seen the expansion of the availability of workforce and services in the major regional centers, but we've, we've got a series of systemic factors that give us the issues we have in, in remote and rural.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Fermin.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to turn to the government's supplementary research, and just to, just to give the point of clarification on something in here on page nine, where it says recruitment and retention, under the heading of recruitment and retention of the rural medical workforce, where I understand the South End inquiry has looked at different evidence or some evidence in relation to financial incentives, and this is carrying on from what I was asking before. It says here that evidence shows that financial incentives are less important... It says here that evidence shows that financial incentives are less important in the recruitment and retention of the rural health workforce than a favorable social working environment. I just wanted to check, that's for GPs, isn't it, in terms of that research as opposed to nurses?
I think I'd have to check with SACS to understand if they're making that point generally based on various data studies.
I did have a look at the footnotes based on SACS inquiries. I've just had a look at that and it does seem to be GP. So I just wanted to flag it with you in terms of the submission you've made, just to triple check and just be careful if you can. You're talking about the overall workforce and whether financial incentives are good for retention. If it is just GPs you're referring to, I think it's important that you specify that because of the disparity in wages there. I now wanted to turn to ENT specialists, here, nose and throat specialists. We heard quite shocking evidence in hearing that we've held in Tari, Manning, Great Lakes area about the wait for children on the public ENT waiting list was anywhere from three to five years. So if a family could afford to go private, they could get their kid sorted straight away. But if they had a three-year-old with really severe things like rhonitis, for example, that affected their hearing, they would have to wait potentially three to four years. What's the government doing about that situation in Tari and Manning, which is just unacceptable? You'd agree, I'm sure.
So there is an investment in additional surgery that's being focused on ensuring that there's better access for pediatric patients in particular. So there's more resources being provided out to the districts to address issues around the waiting times for care, particularly for children. So that investment has been a commitment of the government and is focused on ensuring that those waiting times are brought down. But I think we would all recognise that the challenges we've got, less of the specialists available and the demand and the need for the community there, that the waiting times tend to be longer because there are less specialists in that community. And so we are constrained by the number of specialists that are available. Even if we put resources into enabling them to do more operating, we're still limited by the number of specialists that are there providing those services. So it is a challenge for us, particularly in those environments, but we are committed to getting the waiting times down. And I know that the doctors are just putting the focus on what they need to do to make sure that children in particular get care and within the clinically appropriate waiting times is a focus.
Okay, so for parents now, I didn't quite catch the last instance that you said there. The parents now living in Tari, Manning, who can't afford to go to the private system, you said kind of more investment, but specifically for that region. Is there any relief in sight, do you think, over the next year or two, just to be a little bit more specific?
So there's more operating time being provided to the surgeons to enable them to bring the waiting lists down wherever possible. The challenge that I said is if there aren't a large number of surgeons in that community, then you can't get the surgeon to do more than they can do, even if you offer them more operating time if they're committed to doing other things and providing care in different settings. So the challenge is how much the workforce should go up in those rural environments. I know the districts will explore from time to time opportunities like seeing whether they can get the care transferred to another surgeon who's got less waiting time and that may be outside of the town. If that occurs, then people will support to gain access to that operator who's going to be short on waiting time.
Okay, it doesn't sound promising. I was wondering if you could expand on, again, in your supplementary submission, the government has said that they recognise the issue of affordable housing for healthcare workers. And I was wondering if you could give more detail of that. I note that in this, it doesn't seem to say, for example, that Northern New South Wales is one of the focus, but I know that there's a real crisis in affordable housing for healthcare workers, well, right across the state. But particularly, real estate in Northern New South Wales has just gone through the roof and rents are really hard to, rental accommodations really hard to find. Could you just give me a bit more detail on the overall package, but specifically what's happening in Northern New South Wales? Because it's not mentioned in the submission.
So I don't think we can specifically target it in terms of further capital investment for Northern New South Wales at this point in time. So that's something we will need to further explore. There's no doubt we'll be focused on more rural release away from the coast. Because historically, it hasn't been as much of a challenge to attract and retain people to the rural, into the coastal communities of the rural region. That's been an easier task compared to the others. We certainly are focusing on investing in affordable housing for healthcare workers in Western New South Wales, Hunterville. And we'll be focusing on some of the South Wales and Northern New South Wales as well. And we have planned, say, there is investment being made for us to build some accommodations to support healthcare workers who are either being recruited into or being rotated out of those environments.
Just quickly on this, I'm sorry, Chair, because I can't hear the bell ring, so I can jump in with one more. About healthcare workers, the issue of rental affordability right up and down the coast since COVID is absolutely horrendous. What I'm hearing, you know, one of the reasons, of course, that nurses are resigning, I should say, is because they're just not getting, not able to find rent or accommodation, not getting paid enough to be able to afford increasing rents. So is it something, is it on New South Wales Health's radar now, given how atrocious the rents have become in coastal areas as well?
Look, it's obviously part of that mix of issues where we want to relook at our current workforce settings and all that applies to them. It's been a development that's happened across the last 12 months. And there has been recent public discussion about issues in Northern New South Wales. But I think it is likely to continue into other places. So we're doing this piece of work to try and understand how do we respond to the context that COVID has given us? What settings do we need to change? And how do we support our workforce to sustainably operate and to recover? And that work is underway now.
Thank you. The honourable Wes Fang, just before I pass over to Wes, when Wes has completed his set of questions, we'll probably have enough time then to do one more round with one question each to wrap us up by about 11:15. So thank you, Wes.
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to start this line of questioning with an acknowledgement that we've heard some very hard-to-listen-to personal stories. But I'm keen to know, obviously, New South Wales Health does a lot of feedback loops with patients. Is there, can you provide some insight perhaps to what the patient survey results might be for some of the rural and regional areas, say, in comparison to what we're seeing in the urban areas where New South Wales Health would also be conducting those patient surveys?
So thanks. So the feedback from our local residents is very positive, but I think that's the first point to make. We recognise that that's in large part to the close connection that our staff have with the people who live in those communities and the care that they provide and their own commitment to provide services. And we've heard some of the challenges that they face in doing so. So I just want to acknowledge their commitment to their own communities and to the care they provide. Your information is, you know, our patients' surveys are right across all of our services. And one of the insights that they provided was looking at around 4,500 adults to the 98th War Rural Public Hospitals from July 2019 through to June 2020. And they released this report in June last year. Almost all patients, that's 95% said that overall, the care they receive was very rural, which is very pleasant to hear. Around 9 in 10 patients said that they were always treated with respect from the beginning, which is also very pleasant to hear. Around 8 in 10 patients said their professionals always explained things to them in a way that they could understand. And very interestingly, given some of the evidence that was provided around telehealth, there was also a question around have people received care by telehealth? And around 1 in 8 patients, or 13% of people who responded to the survey, said that they had received telehealth services in the three months after leaving hospital. And of these patients, 92% said they benefited from these services via telehealth. And 89% of them rated the telehealth as good or a very good way of receiving care, which I think is really important for us to acknowledge and to hear that feedback because it is something that we will continue to provide, a service that gives people better access and it's pleasing to hear that all the people who do provide the feedback through the surveys. So they were very promising results. And while I haven't got all of the specific details around the rest of the survey, comparatively, those are high results compared with the political services. The rates of the care that are provided by rural patients tend to be on the higher side of the response surveys worldwide.
So do you think it would be fair to say that the vast majority of patients who are treated in rural and regional areas by New South Wales Health are happy, very happy with their treatment and with the services that have been provided?
Well, that's what that survey results said, as it stands. So yes, we would be happy to confirm that that's a result of the survey.
Thank you. Now, I think that's interesting to note. And I noticed you also raised the telehealth question that was obviously part of that survey. We've heard quite a bit about telehealth throughout this inquiry. And I keep using the word demonisation because I think that it's been perhaps demonised and politicised. But there hasn't been a real opportunity to present the positives that can come out of the telehealth system, i.e. the telestroke system. Now, are you perhaps able to provide some insights as to the services that can be successfully provided by the telehealth system? And perhaps some of the outcomes that we've seen with the utilisation of that system by New South Wales Health?
Yes, so I think the benefits of using technology like telehealth is that you can provide support to the clinicians delivering care in the community with specialist backup who would not allow big volume in real time to support the care that's being provided to an individual patient when they need it. And the telehealth connection to enable that to occur. And I think the systems are being in place to support that occurring for particular conditions like stroke, and I can talk about that in more detail, enabling our rural citizens to get access to rural past care in their rural communities. And I think that's a real benefit. There would be no way that we'll be able to provide that level of specialist knowledge and including the care without the support of telehealth. I mean, some of the other benefits of telehealth are that it reduces the requirement for patients to travel. I mean, if you think about our patient appointments and the need to travel for a specialist consultation, if you can deliver that by telehealth, the person can stay in their own community, doesn't have to travel costs. We're there for this to support about the childhood and transport for people who don't have transport to get from one town to another or to a larger centre. And so it negates the need for those things to be provided and enables people to get access to care and expertise and knowledge to support their care without them having to leave their town. So there are enormous financial and social benefits from applying technology like telehealth to delivery of healthcare. But if you want, we come back to the telestroke issue. I mean, we've now implemented telestroke across many rural centres. And we're very closely evaluating the clinical outcomes of the treatment provided. And that's being monitored. I think we've had many rural patients now receive access to clot-asking drugs for stroke or being transferred to centres that deliver intervascular clot retrieval to where highly skilled specialists put catheters into the arteries in the brain and take the clots that are causing the stroke out. And we're now seeing outcomes from that care which are consistently the world's best practice through the implementation of that telestroke service into our rural and regional communities. And that's an example of what can be achieved in providing appropriate application of technology to support the best of clinical care that we're providing.
So do you think it would be fair for me to categorise the lumping in of all telehealth services into one pot as somewhat simplistic? And that in fact, they can be quite varied in their application and their outcome and the response that is provided?
Absolutely. There are so many different ways that telehealth can be delivered to support clinical care being provided by a range of different health professionals. And also a range of different settings. So we've got examples like critical care cabinets, where we've got our critical care specialists linked in to emergency departments and post-up observation units in rural hospitals to enable the care of someone who is critically ill. While further arrangements for their care are being sorted out, they can dial in through the telehealth and the cabinets to visually look at the patient, to look at what are clinicians on the ground doing, to review their critical signs and some of the diagnostics. So they can read the X-rays and chest X-rays over that technology. And they can provide advice and support and guidance to the clinicians who are on the ground about how to provide the best care. So that's the critical care cabinet. Then I'll talk about the outpatient environments, stroke environments. You can go on. There are so many different ways that telehealth is a really critical, very important technology that we must continue to use to support the best care that we can provide.
Thank you. I won't ask you if you believe that it's been undermined, that that would be asking your opinion. And I know that that would be inappropriate. I'll make that assertion that it's been deliberately undermined by certain people. But could I ask you, in your opinion, the undermining of that telehealth system, does that create a danger to patients where they perhaps have less confidence in the system because of that undermining, when we've seen really good outcomes coming out of what could be, you know, for example, the telestroke system?
I think from our point of view, what we are doing is promoting the positives. So we're looking at the opportunity to provide to rural communities examples of patients who receive care with their own telehealth stories to indicate the benefits and allow people to talk about that firsthand and to share that with their own communities about the benefits of providing. Because it's important that we get positive messages about the importance of this model of providing care and that people feel comfortable and confident and it's going to help them when they need it. So that's the focus we're applying. I think what's very positive is the feedback in the survey where people do receive that, they talk about it very positively. And that's another way to get support out because people will tell their families and their friends about the positive experiences that they're receiving care in that way. And we need to continue to provide the evidence about the clinical outcomes as well that can then give people confidence that this is actually delivering a better care than they would otherwise be able to receive. So we've got a very strong focus on that and a very strong commitment to deliver it. We're also, I'm definitely going to be very carefully, both on the patients and care quality, but also on the conditions of delivering care through telehealth. About how they see it working for them and how whether they will be able to provide comfortable care and what we need to do to support them to be comfortable and confident that they are able to get as possible a life through telehealth as well. So it's all one movement of the system that I'm on, to provide that investment and that support. And I'm just glad that I'll be able to do it in the future.
Thank you for that. I noted that earlier you touched on, I guess, the greater complexity of health services that we see these days as opposed to perhaps 20, 30, 40 years ago. And I know that throughout the inquiry, we've heard people ask, "But we used to be able to do this here and we can't do it now." Are you able to provide just a little bit of insight about how perhaps some of the provision of a treatment might be more complex now and might fall under a special provision of the treatment might be more complex now and might fall under a specialty as opposed to perhaps something that was being able to be done by a GP? But also how that greater complexity of the procedure or treatment means that there's certain specialty training, currency requirements, multidisciplinary support, and the importance of maintaining proficiency, as in, you know, you might only see one patient with this, you know, every so often where you haven't got that density of population. Can you provide just a little bit of insight into that so that people can have an understanding of the difference between now and say 30, 40 years ago?
Yes, certainly. And there are so many things that you could talk about in relation to this. And I think this is one of the factors that has driven the changes in service delivery, not just in New South Wales, but around the country and around the world. And I mean, unfortunately, it's been perceived by rural communities as being cuts as a result of us not investing in services. That can be further from the truth. We're providing more financial resources into our rural services than ever before. Despite that, the workforce challenges, but also these drivers of specialisation and the quality of care that's provided and the need to have skills. If I can think of, I think it was when we were out to Dabo, Mudding and Wellington, where we heard about, you know, at one stage, people could have surgery in their town. Their GP would do surgical procedures and you could have your gallbladder taken out and they're off to the night, no longer could have access to that. Gallbladder surgery now is not something that's provided by a GP. It's provided by, not just necessarily a general surgeon, it's provided by an upper GI surgeon, gastroenterologist surgeon often. And it's done laparoscopically. It's done through an operating telescope, whereas before, like 30 years ago, all the GPs had opened a procedure with a large heart, big surgical incision. It's now done through a smaller incision through a laparoscope. And that equipment is partly expensive, but more importantly, it's actually needs skills to use that equipment, which are, yes, skills that need to be attained by surgeons having access to that sort of surgery in a ongoing way. Otherwise, you can actually have very bad outcomes in gallbladder surgery because complications can occur because it is such a small incision and because people are operating through a cabinet remote. So I think it's an example of where technology and specialisation into even things like gallbladder surgery have meant that the things that used to be able to provide in many places by people who had general skills are no longer possible. And that's not often, I think, acknowledged or appreciated by our community. They don't understand or appreciate how much things have shifted. And they see the fact that it was once provided, it was no longer provided, it's something that's, something we've deliberately done or made a decision not to do, to deny them access to that service locally, and it could be further from the truth. We actually want to ensure that if people have access to that type of surgery, it's going to be the way that's safe, high quality, they get the best outcome. And unfortunately, that means that it can no longer be provided where it was 30, 40 years ago. And that's unfortunately a shift we've seen as technology and knowledge and specialisation and diagnostic services and treatment services become so technologically supported and highly skilled that those changes mean that we can't go back to the way things used to be. It's not appropriate to go back. So we need to now think about how do we set the system up to support people to gain access to that care appropriately? And what changes do we need to make as a result of this inquiry, according to what we've heard, to give people confidence that the way this system is working is actually ultimately for their benefit?
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Now, we'll just have one more round and that'll involve a question from the Honourable Watts-Schickord, the Deputy Chair, Kate Fairman and Wes Fang. So the Honourable Watts-Schickord.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the bonus question. Thank you very much. Dr. Lyons and Mr. Minz, you'd be aware that on December 21, 2021, Premier Dominic Perreté appointed Bronny Taylor as the Minister for Regional Health. What is the responsibility as the Minister for Regional Health? What interaction have you had with her? And is she also responsible for the board appointments to rural LHDs?
The Secretary of the Department has created a process that she's consulted with both ministers on to work through how we approach the dual ministry with respect to the way the ministry and the system operates. That work has commenced, it's got a short timeframe. It needs to look at the governance arrangements and the communication protocols and any approval protocols that arise from the dual ministry. And that work is in train. So I can't explain much more about it at this stage, except to say that your example of board appointments is a case in point where we will need to have an understood protocol between the two ministers.
Thank you, Mr. Minz.
If I may, this is a form of a relationship, a supplementary submission. I personally briefed Minister Taylor and her team on the content of the submission that we were proposing to put in as a supplementary submission, so she was across what we were putting in both Minister Taylor's office and Minister Hazard's office, had an opportunity to review that prior to being aligned for the committee's consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Lyons.
Thank you, Dr. Lyons.
Deputy Chair, Honourable Hurst.
Thank you. We've had a lot of community members and healthcare workers throughout this inquiry that feel like their local health district isn't listening to them or responding to their needs. I noticed that you acknowledged the problem in your latest submission, but it didn't really offer up any solutions. Is there anything that we've got to happen other than encouraging health peers to actually listen to the community?
So I think that we share what we've identified in there is despite the best efforts of our local health district, I don't want to say they do work hard to try and ensure that they have good community engagement processes for each rural community. But it was very clear in the evidence that that's not looking to the level of needs because there was quite a degree of feedback that people didn't feel like they knew what was going on with their local services, didn't have enough involvement or say in what happened or how it happened. And so we do need to strengthen that up. In the supplementary submission, we see the importance of having co-designed services. So that the community is actually involved with the health service and the health services that are provided in the town to look at how those services are delivered, who delivers what, where, how that's arranged, how we ensure that we meet the needs of the local community. There's a concept in there of the rural area community controlled health organisation as a concept, as something we could look to develop if we could work with the Commonwealth to say that for a rural area, a rural area, let's bring everything together. Let's look at how it's funded, how the workforce across all the services that we're responsible for, the Commonwealth deliver, that might be in private practice as well. How do we support them coming together to think about how they deliver to the needs of the local community in a way that the community had more involvement directly? And we've promoted that concept as something that could be explored as a way to address this issue, but we are very conscious that as a result of what we've heard, we need to do more to strengthen the relationship between our service providers and the communities that they deliver care in.
Thank you, Dr. Lyons. Kate Fairman.
Thank you. You also state in your supplementary submission that you have heard that the Aboriginal community witnesses have expressed their concern about culturally unsafe practices or not feeling culturally safe in hospitals and what have you. They particularly mentioned telehealth, something that they are struggling with. However, it doesn't say in your submission that you recognise that telehealth is an issue for Aboriginal communities. The most recent, there was a recent contract for medical services at Wollgut Shire, which was given to a new company which has seen face-to-face, face-to-face primary care services reduced by 50%, for example. So it seems that it's getting worse in regional communities with high Aboriginal populations. Has New South Wales Health heard this and what are you doing in terms of Aboriginal communities reluctance to engage with telehealth services?
So some of this is relatively new in terms of the new models that are being delivered by telehealth and we're very conscious that we need to do more to ensure that they are appropriately provided and that they're culturally appropriate for Aboriginal communities. We also need to do a little further work for culturally and whistfully diverse communities as well. So it is a focus of us, it's more work to be done, no doubt about that, with Fairman, we've got more work to do in this space. It is ignored though, it is important to get it right and it's important that we hear and listen to the feedback and we address that as we take steps to further support the introduction of this modality of care. It's going to be important that we address those issues. So we're conscious of it, it's early days and we're testing in it, but we've got more work to do this, nothing about that.
The Honourable Wes Fang.
Thank you, Chair. And I want to thank the witnesses today. For my final question, I'm just keen to know, we've heard a lot about the pressure that's being put on New South Wales Health staff at the moment. And I think the Honourable, sorry, Ms. Kate Fairman raised separations. But do you have any figures on perhaps the number of staff that are separating from New South Wales Health, given the outbreaks and the increased pressure that we've seen?
Yes, Mr. Fang. But the first thing is to give you a bit of context that New South Wales Health has what you might call a relatively low turnover rate if you compare it to other sectors and other industries. So if we look at sort of 2021, our overall turnover was 8.4. It was 7.1 for nursing, 8.3 for medical, and in rural and regional it was 6.5% for nursing and 8.2 for medical. What's happened under COVID is yet another testament to the commitment of New South Wales Health staff. The separation rate declined across medical and across nursing and midwifery workforce. It just sort of demonstrates their commitment to understand the context of the pandemic and to what it is. But what we have seen towards the end of Delta is a return to what you'd call a pre-COVID environment. So we've returned our separation rate to where it was in 2019. So it's a material movement of about 1.5% to 2%. That part is why we want to work on that rethinking of our workforce context and our workforce strategies in a post-COVID world or in a living with COVID world. And I've talked about that work that is underway already.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen, that brings us to the conclusion of today's hearing and indeed the public hearings for this inquiry. On behalf of the committee members, can I thank you both as senior representatives on New South Wales Health for not just appearing today and being very frank and fearless with your answers to questions, but also your participation in this inquiry, which has been over a long period of time. Appreciate you've got senior and significant responsibilities, but you have faithfully followed this inquiry around the state, being there yourself in person if at all possible, or having some representative there who I'm sure would have reported back to you. And to have such direct engagement from New South Wales Health, in fact, is very valuable in the first instance, but to be acknowledged and thanked for because it does give some confidence to the committee members and the inquiry itself, that there is this exchange of information going on between ourselves. Can I, in concluding note, ask you please to pass on, once again, on behalf of the committee, our sincere thanks to New South Wales Health, but in particular with respect to all those working at the coalface of delivering services and healthcare to the citizens of this state. As a general statement, we've seen that being done and being done to a high standard. And we'd like to thank all those people for that, but also particularly acknowledging their deep commitment and hard work during this difficult time that we've all faced as a community with respect to the COVID challenges that we've been facing in recent times. So we'd ask if you could please pass it on, we'd be most grateful for that. That then brings us to the conclusion of today's, as I said, final hearing. We thank everyone who's joined us today, but over the course of the inquiry, and now it's the hard work of the committee, working closely with our secretary to develop the report and recommendations, and that's the job ahead. So thank you all very much, and we look forward to being in contact in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.